All right, good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled Washington County Zoning Board of Adjustments Meeting and the Washington County Planning Board Meeting as of August 22nd, 2024. My name's Lauren Shackelford. I'm the chairman. I'll call the meeting to order with roll call, please.
Anthony McNutt.
Present.
Joe Maynard.
Here.
Lisa Miller.
Here.
Jay Piercy.
Here.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
Lauren Shackelford.
Here. Okay, so we have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. The first we will do is the Washington County Zoning Board of Adjustments Meeting. First item is the approval of the agenda. We'll start with variance hearings. We have, it looks like, one, two, three, three variances that we'll look at, and then conditional use permits. We have one conditional use permit, and then one, two, three county development projects as well. Is there any additions or modifications to the agenda stated?
There are four variances.
Four variances, okay. I'm sorry, I can't count. You are correct.
Change, 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 change.
Sorry about that. Okay. Subject to that, any changes to the agenda stated? Okay? Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
And a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll start. The first item is the Andrea Espinoza variance, City of Fayetteville Planning Area. We'll start with the staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map, the site map, and these are the neighbors who were notified. The applicant is requesting a variance to build an additional home on their 1.57 acre property to care for their parents. The variance would allow the applicant to deviate from the one acre minimum for each home on the property. To date, planning staff has not received any complaints about this project, and we have our standard planning conditions.
Okay. Any questions of staff and board members? Okay, seeing none, is the applicant present? If you would, please come up, state your name, just tell us a little bit about your project.
Hi, my name is Jamina Vasquez, and I am Andrea Espinoza's wife. And since we have a lot of land back there and behind our house, my dad and mom and dad are 65 years old, and they already retire, and we want to keep them close to us, and we want to build a house back there for them.
Okay. So you're not proposing a split, just building two houses on the same structure property?
Yes.
Okay. All right, appreciate it. Any question of the applicant from board?
Is that septic on double springs right there, or are you gonna be on?
Yes, we already, they already approved the septic.
They have?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. I'll open it up to the public if there's anybody here that would like to address this item. Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to board for action.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the variance request as submitted.
We got a motion or a second?
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ma'am. All right, moving on. The second item is the Tonty Town Planning Area, Denver Holdings LLC. Again, a variance for acreage. Staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map, the site map, and the neighbors who were notified. The applicant is requesting a variance to build a home on a 0.69 acre property. The property is surrounded by subdivisions, and other lots cannot be adjusted to allow the subject parcel to be adjusted to one acre. The variance would allow the applicant to deviate from the one acre minimum requirement to build a home. To date, planning staff has not received any complaints about the project.
Okay. Any questions from board members of staff?
This subdivision, what's the requirements? They're not one acre per house for the subdivision, right?
I don't actually know about the surrounding subdivisions. I believe that there are some that are smaller.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay, is the applicant for this here? Hi, if you would, same thing. Get up, give us your name, tell us a little bit about your project, please.
My name is Rhonda Scott. I'm here speaking on the behalf of Denver Holdings and Janice Nelson, the property owners. 0.69 acres, as she stated, we cannot expand that, or we would be happy to. The lot to the east of it is in a subdivision, and everything in this one happens to be in the county. We're right on the property line. We have a filed easement approved, and we have the water permit approved for that acreage as well.
Same question he asked on the other one. Is this gonna be on septic?
It is. Reba Bailey did the perk, and the perk was fine for a four-bedroom home.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant from board members? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody in the public like to address this request? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board.
A move that we pass as applied for.
Got a motion for approval as presented, or a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ma'am. Okay, moving on. Item C, this is in the county, Kylie Kidder variance, again acreage. Staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map, the site map, and the neighbors who were notified. The applicant is requesting a variance to adjust a parcel to accommodate for a septic system that encroaches into the adjoining parcel. Currently, the parcels are 0.2 acres and 1.24 acres. After the property line adjustment, the parcels would be 0.71 acres and 0.82 acres. The variance would allow for the two parcels to be less than one acre each. To date, planning staff has not received any complaints about the project.
Okay. All right, is the applicant here on this one?
Tim West with Atlas Professional Land Surveying. I'll be representing Ms. Kylie Kidder this evening. Again, she's requesting the variance for the acreage minimum. She's got two existing parcels. The parcel that includes the house is a .29 acre parcel. It does not include the septic system. To correct the septic system encroachment, we'd like to adjust that parcel with the acreage shown on the survey plat there.
Is there a reason there's not just a lot combination to make them one parcel?
There could be, but I think that would kind of go against kind of her rights as having two existing parcels as they sit now. I don't feel that that would be fair to a county resident to force them to combine two parcels when they've got an existing situation as is.
Was this, I mean, obviously, the .29, was it grandfathered in? Was it part of the Winslow city limits at one point?
I mean, technically, if you wanna call it Winslow city limits, it's in the Winslow city limits. But according to the state, since they do not have a planning authority, it must go through the county's planning authority. So we've got tons of these small little parcels
Right.
all through the city, and it's definitely becoming an issue, of course, as development is increasing in that area, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions of the applicant? Hold on a second, sir.
So you're saying that the owner is opposed to combining the two lots?
She does not want to combine the two lots.
Would she be willing to do that?
No, she does not want to do that. That's why we're filing for the variance.
Okay.
Appreciate it, sir. All right, anybody from the public want to address this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to the board.
A question for staff over here. Laurel, we're adjusting the property line, or they're asking for the property line to be adjusted a little bit so that there's, I guess, Leach Field can extend over into the other piece, and they're wanting to move the property line. What is normal on that kind of thing? What has happened in the past as far as, you know, it's almost an acre lot, a little over, so why don't you combine them? I mean, what's the planning department think of those things? How do they usually handle them or recommend?
So generally, because the parcel that has the home on the property is .2 acres, they're just wanting it to, they're wanting to make it a little bit larger so that it can include that septic, and that can all be contained in one parcel. They don't necessarily want to combine those two. They just want to make it so that they're closer to an acre each. And we haven't had a problem with that in the past, just because the variance would allow them to do that.
So yeah, so we've got one that's significantly under county code at .20, and one that's over at 124. So we'd be creating two that are outside the one acres, but they would be close at .71 and .82. Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, board have action on this item?
I'll recommend to pass as applied for.
We got a motion for approval. I'll second. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on. The fifth variance, when I, or I'm sorry, the fourth variance that I couldn't count. Thomas variance, this is in the county as well. Staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map, the site map, and the neighbors that were notified. The applicant is requesting a variance to build a detached shop garage on the property that would encroach on the existing front 25-foot setback by about 21 feet. Because of the current location of the septic system, the only available location for the applicant to build on the property is within setbacks. The shop garage would be for personal use only, and to date, planning staff has not received any complaints about this project.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Hey, Blaine Ashley with Bates &amp; Associates, representing Derek Thomas on this variance request. Here to answer any questions you all may have.
Okay, appreciate it. Questions of the applicant from staff? I appreciate you going through the process. A lot of times, people don't get the variance when they build shops within setbacks, so.
Sure thing.
Thank you for doing that. All right, anybody in the public like to make comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to the board. I guess I will stay, since I made that comment. Obviously, building setbacks are to protect neighbors from each other. We see a lot of times that we don't get variances when people do this, so I do appreciate them doing that. I support this by the fact that none of the adjoining property owners had any issue with it. Was the comment that I was making with that, so. I guess based on that, I'll make a motion for approval as presented, since I'm out there already.
I'll second your motion.
All right, we got a motion and a second for approval of this variance. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is it for the zoning and board of adjustments meeting, so I will take a motion to adjourn that.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, we will move on now and start the Washington County Planning Board Meeting. First item, or first thing we need to do is roll call again, please.
Anthony McNutt.
Present.
Joe Maynard. Lisa Miller.
Here.
Jay Piercy.
Here.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
Lauren Shackelford.
Here. Okay, so we have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. First item is the approval of the minutes from the January, I'm sorry, January, July 11th, 2024 meeting. Those were sent out earlier and reviewed. Anybody have any questions, corrections to those minutes as stated? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of those minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion? And a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, let's approve the agenda for tonight. Again, hopefully, I'll do a little better job counting on this one. We have a conditional use permit in the Greenland Planning Area. We have one, two, three land development hearings. And that's it. So we've got Red Hawk CUP, Shamrock Acres Minor Subdivision, Shop Solutions Final Large-Scale Development, Custom Lawn Care Landscape. Anything, adjustments or modifications to the agenda stated? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda stated.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's move on. First item is the Red Hawk CUP. We'll start with the staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map and a site map. These are the neighbors who were notified. This is a surrounding use map on the left. It shows that in the red and the darker green, a lot of agricultural use. And there's another shade of green that shows the residential use in the area, as well as the cease and desist operation letter that was sent to the applicant. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to utilize five acres on their 61.77 acre parcel to store Hog Box containers when sufficient space at the Hog Box headquarters is unavailable. The original application states 14 acres, but the applicant has since requested that they only use five acres. The applicant is currently storing containers on the property, so this permit would allow the applicant to bring the existing land into compliance with county requirements. The property will be used as overflow storage of the trailers, which are about 40 to 51 feet in length. The images show the location, as well as the entrance into the property. Hours of operation would be irregular and infrequent, as drivers will only be on the property to deliver the empty storage containers. To date, planning staff has received 14 complaints opposing this project. And the outlined image shows the acreage that they'll be using and where the storage containers are currently, as well as another image from the front of the property where you can see the containers. This is the annexation map from the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Council, as well as the annexation map for Greenland. Greenland Planning initially proposed that the C2 areas shown on the west side of their planning area be a possible C2 use into the western side of the planning area. Council strongly disagreed with that position and wanted to use this, wanted the C2 use to end in the city limit boundary, and entirely planning area, the entire planning area solely residential use throughout. The designation was changed on July 8th, and this is all information that we've received from Greenland. The City of Greenland has posted no truck signs along Southeast Campbell Road. After amending their ordinance, after examining the City of Greenland's code and ordinances, the city limit boundaries, and the conversation with Greenland City Staff and Washington County Road Department, this roadmap shows the possible route to access the property. In green, that's the possible route. The red is where the no-truck sign starts and where they've been currently driving through. And then that yellow is the county road that they would drive to access the point on their property. Washington County is designated, Washington County Road CR65 is designated as a truck route in green. Pending the approval of this conditional use permit, the business is allowed to utilize CR65 as the designated truck route to access the property. We have a project timeline from the very beginning of this application. On September 9th, the property owner submitted a 911 address application for a residential address. On October 25th, the planning department received the first complaint about activity on the property involving storing dozens of shipping containers and large semi-truck driving in and out of the property. November 1st, planning staff contacted the property owner to inform them that they needed to apply for a conditional use permit, as well as a large-scale development permit. May 7th of this year, after a number of additional neighbor complaints, Washington County sent the property a cease and desist letter stating that the property was still out of compliance. On June 7th, the conditional use permit application was submitted to the County Planning Department. And on July 1st, Greenland Planning Commission voted 4 to 0 to recommend denial of the conditional use permit project. These are some more images that we've received from neighbors. And these are the standard planning conditions that we have submitted as a department for the Hog Box CUP.
Okay, so a couple of questions before we go any further. The property is in Greenland city limits or Washington County, or a little bit of both?
It's just outside of city limits, so it's in their planning area, but they do, they do have plans in the future to revisit that, as far as I've been aware.
So the conditional use permit went to Greenland first because of that?
Yes, because it's in their planning area, Greenland wanted to review it.
Okay, all right. And then my other question was, the timeline shows the request for application for a large-scale development, too, that wasn't mentioned. Is that still something that the county's expecting, and what's the process on that?
Yes, so because they are using one or more acres, they're required to apply for the large-scale development. It's very similar to the conditional use permit process, where they will go through the technical review. They're required to submit some additional information with some engineering, and then they'll bring it to the planning board again.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions of staff?
Can you explain the truck route?
Yeah.
And the difference in the path that they're being told they need to use? If it's other than this truck route?
So the designated truck route is a county road, and that's in green on the image on the screen. Part of Southeast Campbell Road is within Greenland, and that's the part that is in red. That is what has, to my understanding, has been used in the past. No, once it, well, once it gets into the Greenland city limits, they've requested that there be no trucks on that, on that road. Required, I would say, actually. They do have, they do have the no-truck sign up there, sorry. Yeah. Yeah.
And you said there was a, it was a PR, not a county road? There's a PR road?
It just says County Road CR65.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant, applicant's represented here?
Yes.
If you would, please, give us your name for the record. Tell us a little bit about the project.
Good evening. My name is John Ogle. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, who is effectively Lori Diversary. She owns the property outright through her individual LLC, which is Red Hawk Properties LLC. She bought the property in late 2023 with the intent, when she bought it, and it remains her intent for the long-term use of the land, is to have it as her personal ranch. So she's got two campers out there, where she'll go on the weekends with her three sons and spend some time riding four-wheelers on the brush hog, tending to the property. Ms. Diversary also owns the local Fayetteville business Hog Box, so their headquarters is in South Fayetteville on South City Lake Road. They employ about 50 employees, and the premise of the business is they lease out mobile storage containers and truck trailers, and they keep their inventory at their headquarters in South Fayetteville. So the inventory on the yard could be high, depending on the purchase orders and how much they have leased out, or it could be low. The conditional use that we're requesting today is that we be allowed to utilize a small five-acre portion of the Greenland parcel to store or park overflow excess inventory from the Hog Box HQ when the inventory gets high. We intend for the project to be minimally invasive, as minimally invasive as possible. We don't need gas, we don't need electric, we don't need sewer signage, drainage. The property is currently zoned agricultural. We're not trying to put in a hog farm or chicken farm, which we think would be more invasive than the use that we're requesting. As far as hours of operations, just eight to five during the week. And, but we don't expect to be out there every day. I would like that clear. We expect to be out there maybe five to eight days a month, actually pulling inventory off the land or putting it on. And I'll get into why that's the case in a minute. For landscaping, we've already done substantial improvements to the property. We've created a driveway, a new entrance, new fence, cut grass and cleared the brush. If we need to add more landscaping to protect the neighbors, we're happy to do that. I expect the road use will be a talking point tonight. So if you have any questions on the truck routes, I'm happy to get into that. The truck routes are mapped up there. The green route right now is a designated truck route that you can use to access. So Greenland has an ordinance that if you're operating in city limits, you need to use designated truck routes. So we propose that, you know, to be in compliance with that ordinance. That's why that is included in our presentation there. But Mr. Adda and the technical team did not require us to perform a traffic study for this project. But I did check with Mr. Jeff Crowder, who I believe has seen our application, and he runs the Washington County Road Department, and he has approved this project from a road use perspective. So I think he's seen the project's application, and then I spoke with him about what we're doing, what our use is. We're using the trucks to pull off containers. So he's approved that. A little, a little bit on how we got here. Ms. Diversary bought the property in late 2023. She bought it. She, she thought she could use it this way and how she wanted to, but, you know, within reason, and that's also why we're here, is to get our approvals done. But we received a cease and desist letter from the county on May 6th, and shortly after that is when I got involved, and I started working with Mr. Adda on what we need to do to comply. But our dispatch logs, in March, we had four days where we were pulling containers on or off the property. In April, it was 6, and May, it was 1, and June, it was 3. After we received the cease and desist letter, there were three days where we pulled containers off the property to fulfill a customer order, but we never added any to the property. And after the first day, Mr. Adda called me and said, hey, we've got the cease and desist letter. You need to be in compliance. And I talked to Ms. Diversary, and I said, we've gotta fulfill this customer order, give this till Friday. So that Friday was June 14th, and since then, we've been in complete compliance. There's been nothing in or out since June 14th. As part of this process, because the property is located in the Greenland Planning Area, we had to go to the Greenland Planning Commission. And they don't have decision-making authority, but they make a recommendation to this committee as about the project and whether to approve it or not. They did, they voted not to approve our project for a couple of reasons. They did not like the truck usage on the roads surrounding the property. But again, Mr. Crowder at the Washington County Road Department has approved this project. And they did not, the main reason was they did not find our requested conditional use compatible with the surrounding and existing use surrounding this property. So, you know, I think that's incorrect, and I would just like to give a couple of examples of surrounding use that's ongoing and has been ongoing. There's two concrete plants one mile directly north. Both of those concrete plants are outdoor use. It's more invasive than what we're requesting. It throws a lot of dust up. Those trucks, which are cement mixer trucks and dump trucks, run from, I think, 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon. And Bollinger Trucking is a quarter mile south of us on Southeast Campbell Road, and they operate an agricultural trucking company where they have the liquid tractor-trailers where they transport product up and down Southeast Campbell. Our project is much less invasive than that. We don't intend to be out there every day, between 5:00 and 8:00 days a month. Picket, and that use has been ongoing for a while. Picket Construction is a mile north of us. Ozark Mountain Air is a quarter mile south. And Mr. Bert Hannah's Greenland Industrial Park is adjacent to this property. And that project was before this commission in February of 2023. It's 34 industrial warehouses at 10,000 square feet each. As part of their CUP application, they did a traffic study where they estimated that there were going to be 465 vehicle trips per day. Our use is not anywhere close to that volume, and that project was approved in February of 2023. And the reason I bring those instances up is I think we fit quite well, the conditional use that we're requesting, within the immediate vicinity and the surrounding area. Just to wrap up in my last 90 seconds or so, we have a couple of recommendation letters from local businesses, and I'll just read them really briefly, if that's okay with you. One is from Picket Construction, Mr. Nathan Ogden. He says, "To whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter of reference for Red Hawk Properties, CUP Hog Box and this Lori Diversary. We have done business with Hog Box for over 20 years. They have always been professional, courteous, and keep their equipment and their containers looking very nice. I've visited their office in the Fayetteville Industrial Park numerous times, and it's always kept in tip-top shape, organized inside and out. It seems they carry a lot of pride in how their image is portrayed." And the last one is from Mr. Bert Hannah at Hannah's Candles. He says, "Dear Planning Commission, I'm writing this letter in reference to the conditional use permit application for Red Hawk Properties/Hog Box. I'm a local business owner and a resident of Washington County, and I own property that neighbors the parcel in question for this conditional use permit. Over the past 25 years, I've worked with Hog Box on many different projects and have always known them to be professional and courteous to their customers and their community. One of my properties adjoins the southwest side of the property in question, and I want to encourage the committee to approve the conditional use permit application. Red Hawk Properties has always done a lot of cleanup and improvements on that parcel. They've already done, and I have faith that they will continue improvements in which all surrounding landowners benefit from. Hog Box is a great local company that employs approximately 50 employees here in Washington County. They give back to our community in many ways by giving scholarships. They give back to our community in many ways by giving scholarships, sponsoring athletic teams, cheer programs, rodeo, 4-H program, and so much more for our youth. I'm asking the Planning Commission to approve the application and allow Hog Box to store their equipment as needed." Um, with that, I would request that the commission approve our conditional use permit. Um, and I'll turn my time back over to you, Chairman.
Okay. John, a couple of questions real quick.
Sure.
So, um, how, when was the first use of the property? When did they start storing containers on the property? Do you know?
Um, I believe in March. Lori, were we earlier than that? March? Yeah, to my knowledge, it's, it's March of this year.
So basically March to June before the cease and, uh, cease and desist, or was it your March the previous?
We were, March of twenty-four is when I believe it started, and then we got the cease and desist in May. And then we had three days, according to our dispatch logs, where we pulled property, uh, inventory off, but nothing was added since then.
So March. You said it was, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, you said March to the end of May?
No, 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 we got the cease and desist letter May sixth and May seventh.
That you were operating on that property?
From, s- excuse me, um, March is when it started, I believe. And then we got the cease and desist letter, nothing's been added. We pulled some inventory off in June, and then we have left the rest alone because we didn't want to run trucks out there pending the decision here tonight.
So from March to May before the cease and desist, it was overflow parking? What, do you have any idea what the fewest numbers were, what the highest numbers were, what that fluctuation was for the overflow during that time period?
If I, I don't know the exact numbers, but if I give you a range, I think it would be between fifty and a hundred.
How many is out there today? I couldn't, I couldn't count them all.
You know how many we have today, Lori?
About sixty.
Okay. Okay, alright.
How many units will, uh, fit on five acres?
Um, so in our application, I've got a, a little five-acre red outline drawing. I think you can, I, when there were the most out there, I believe it was about a hundred, all of them fit in that five acres.
But you wouldn't put more than a hundred?
Um, I, that's not, the intention is, I know it.
You said five acres, if you put everyone you could on five acres, how many would it be?
This is, this picture shows sixty on the five acres, so that gives you some idea how many.
Which?
Page thirty-four fifty-eight.
Are these shipping containers, eighteen-wheeler trailers? What are, what are we looking at?
It's, um, like a mobile storage container and then a truck trailer, so it would fit on the back of like a, a semi-truck, some of them. And some of them are like, um, it looks kind of like a shipping container. Does that make sense? I think there's a picture in here as well. I can point you to a page if you'd like.
Do you also have roll-off dumpster services too?
Um, yes, ma'am, but I don't believe we have any of those on the property. Is that right?
I can't hear her, she's not on speaker.
I'll, I'll, um, I'll summarize. There's, there's none being stored out there. There is one dumpster at the front by the entrance because they're redoing the entrance work up there, and they're putting in a new fence. So for like the farm cleanup, there is one dumpster out there, but it's not part of the commercial storage. Does that make sense?
Can those semis be stacked on top of each other and go high, or is what we're seeing, yeah?
I believe the answer to that is no. I think you'd ruin the integrity of the, the truck trailer. Maybe the storage, the, the mobile storage ones you could. Okay.
I'm sorry, again, I couldn't hear. She's not on the speaker.
You said that wouldn't be, no stack.
No, no stacking, no, ma'am.
But it basically takes a semi to move each individual container?
It's a, I think, yeah, I think the answer to that would be yes. It's a heavy-duty truck for sure.
Okay.
And I don't know, just to clarify, I don't, I don't think all of the trucks used to move them are like true, like big-cabs semi-trucks, but it's like a heavy-duty truck that you would pull like a, a dump truck with.
So is this like an eighteen-wheeler coming in and out of here?
Yes. Um, if you have the fifty-foot, uh, trailer hooked up, it's kind of similar. Yes, ma'am. Right.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant at this time?
Yeah, um, so on that five to eight days, there would be potentially sixty assets moved with either a day cab or some kind of similar trucking unit to move the trailers off. So I mean, you're talking about, you know, seven to eight trips a day? If, if it was on the eight-day side of that, and more if it was on the five-day side?
Um, I gave the, the five to eight days as an estimate, because i- it's overflow inventory. So I can't think of a circumstance where we would pull everything off unless it was some, some kind of business emergency or something. I guess it could happen. Um, but I, I just, the intent of the use is certainly not like we're accessing that every day. That's why we have the HQ, that's what they do at the HQ, which is already permitted, and since South Fayetteville and the industrial park is ready to go. This is like, you know, more seasonal overflow storage.
So all of the storage onsite at Hog Box is full? This is just for overflow, and it doesn't fit on the property in hog eye? Is that fair?
Yes, sir, I think that's generally true.
I was in the Facebook page for that company, and it looked like there was an eighteen-wheeler trailer that had the Tulsa Driller's baseball team mascot spray painted on the side of that. Is that one of the trailers that this company owns? It was on their Facebook page, advertising?
I think, I, let me ask Lori, but I think that would be done for like an event or something.
It was on, it looked like what I'm looking at.
It looked like what I'm looking at right here, but it had like the Tulsa Driller's mascot spray painted on the side of this thing stored on that property. Would that be what I saw or not? That was on the Facebook, on her Facebook site?
It would not be what you saw on our Facebook. It's a special project. We do a lot of things for local schools.
What would that particular? What would that particular trailer that day be used for with the Tulsa Driller's mascot painted on it?
It's not the Tulsa Driller's mascot, but I, I do know what you're talking about. It, that one, it was specially done for the Washington County Fair, and that's, that's where it's at.
I think Diamond Baseball Holdings would find that very interesting because it looked like their mascot.
It did.
And I don't think they know you did that.
Alright.
I've got, I've got two more questions. The Hannahs that sent the letter of recommendation, do they live there, or do they just do business there?
They, they do business there. The, the example I gave, the industrial warehouse, the thirty, that's.
So they're not living on that road in that traffic?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
And then, uh, the truck route that's designated as green, while that's the Greenland recommended truck route, is that the one that's, that was being used when you guys were active? Is that, is that how they were getting to and from?
Um, so I believe we originally were going, entering from the north on Southeast Campbell. Um, and then we discovered the ordinance, we went, we went to the Greenland Planning Commission, and they said, no, look, there's this truck route. So then we changed approach and just started going.
To the other side of forty-nine to come?
Yes, sir, and then going up, going down south, and then coming up that way. Um, but the ordinance is, if you're not traveling, if your destination is outside of the city limits, which we are, then i- the ordinance says that you need to use the designated truck route, which is in green. So, yes, that's what we've been using.
So you're basically going to up to West Fork and getting off?
No, that's the Greenland, except they're just going on the west side.
Okay.
And running, and running to the south, and then they're coming over the interstate, and then they're going around that blind corner down the hill, and then around the sharp corner.
Okay.
That's right, because this, unless you're going into the city, you're not supposed to go through the red, according to the law.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. We may bring you back.
Yes, thanks.
Appreciate it very much. Any other question? Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Is, is this gonna be an indefinite use, or is there a, a, a time that it's gonna be just a ranch and?
Um, that's a good question. That's a good question. Um, it is not.
It's not required to answer it, I mean, but, I don't know if it's germane, but I just thought I'd ask it.
No, that's a good question. Um, I don't think we have a specific timeline. As far as our intent right now, it's not the, the long-term solution. Um, but no, I don't have a specific, you know, deadline, and, and we're happy to discuss that. If that's what the commission requires, just let, let me know, I can, I can talk to Ms. Diversary too.
And I guess that's to staff, conditional use permit is in, typically in, in place in perpetuity as long as the owner still stays with the property, correct?
Yes.
There's not stipulation at time, it can be settled or something.
I don't believe we've done anything like that before.
That was my question, is, is would that be acceptable to some neighbors to, look, if you're only doing it for two years, we can deal with it, but it's, can't be forever. That's just a.
Gotcha. Alright, again, we may bring you back. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, I know there's a lot of people here that want to speak to this. I want to give everybody an opportunity to speak. I'm gonna point out a couple of things before we start. First of all, um, I ask everybody to be considerate, um, of both sides. Everybody's gonna have differing opinions, so please be considerate with your conversations. I'm gonna ask individuals to limit your time to two minutes each. Um, you don't have to repeat what's been said, feel free to, to do what you want to do. But we will, because there's so many people, we're gonna limit time to two minutes as an individual. If you're representing a group, you can speak for up to ten minutes. Um, I'm also gonna do something a little different, since this has already been seen and, and discussed with the city of Greenland. Greenland doesn't have authority, but they do make recommendations to us. We do typically work congruently with the municipalities on these projects in the county. So I'm gonna start with anybody that's representing Greenland or an entity of Greenland that would like to speak. I'm gonna ask you to take the floor first, please. I guess I can do that.
Hi, Brenda Reynolds, Chairman of the Greenland Planning Commission. Um, I hadn't planned on speaking this evening, but I just did want to clarify a few things. Um, on the truck route, uh, we had actually suggested that that would probably be the truck route that needed to be followed, which goes in front of Hog Valley RV Park. Um, but I did also let Mr. Ogle know that this, the council was looking at possibly changing the truck ordinance. I did just now confirm with the mayor, the council has not yet changed the ordinance, but they are looking at changing it to where that also is not going to be a valid truck route for i- inside Greenland. So basically, um, it would have to go down seventy-one highway into West Fork, and I don't know what restrictions West Fork has. Um, the mayor had just, he said, right now, they could, but, um, be aware it's under consideration already for a no-truck route, so they should have a plan for an exit. Um, large trucks turning in front of tow bows is a disaster waiting to happen with large trucks coming at. We, we already have a lot of accidents right there in front of tow bows at that intersection. Um, with regard to Hannahs, Hannahs, no, they do not live in the city, they operate. Um, the reason that their large-scale development, their industrial park went in, um, I had gotten in touch with Mr. A- Ada. Uh, it went in prior to us knowing about it, and so we got it on the tail end. Um, had we known that that was gonna go in, we probably would have not suggested, because that is an area which the city, um, our C-three zone is the thoroughfare zoning, which is running along I forty-nine, for travelers coming in and out, visitors coming through, um, also the residents. Um, when we did our rezoning map, as they showed a little while ago, we actually did have to take that industrial park into consideration and zone industrial area, which we would have not originally put as industrial area. With regard to the concrete companies, um, Planning Commission, we had, we had recommended denial of those CUPs. And, um, the council saw otherwise, and they are now suffering the repercussions of that. We have had numerous complaints, um, and there are citations that are being issued because of the dust, noise, vibration. Um, it does not meet the intent or the description of our industrial zone, let alone our commercial zone.
Thank you for your service on the Planning Commission. Appreciate it. Um, question, I don't know that you can answer, but it was mentioned earlier that Greenland's considering annexation at some point. Do you have any update or idea of, of plans to annex this property into the city limits of Greenland and what that timeline might be?
Actually, we just got done doing annexation, and in my conversation with the mayor, we would have actually looked at this particular area. However, we felt that it was, or they felt, the administration felt that it was just too much property all at one time as far as for infrastructure and everything. So, um, we wanted to go ahead and do this and let that, let the dust kind of settle. Um, there's not a set time, um, but that was one of the reasons why the council, when we had proposed, um, um, con- taking our C-two zone over toward into the planning area, um, the council was very adamant, no, because if we even annex this in, it's going to annex in as residential. Um, we do have a five-hundred-and-twenty-five home subdivision just north of this location on the road that is the no-truck route, um, that has, has been approved.
Okay.
So that's gonna be going in just north.
And is that adjacent to this particular property?
No, ma'am, it, it's north. Um, so where you see the red truck route, um, I don't, if, if that I can.
Sure.
Where you, where you see the red truck route, it's kind of where it comes, if you start at the very bottom and you go up where it starts curving, right there on that curb area where the, the trees and everything stop and the pink starts, right in that area is where the five-hundred-and-twenty-five home subdivision is gonna be. And it's gonna be on the, on the east side, okay?
Okay.
So it'll be north and east.
Appreciate your time, thanks for your input.
Anything else?
Anybody else representing the city of Greenland like to speak on this? Okay, I'll open it up to residents. Again, please, two minutes apiece unless you're speaking for a group. Please, if you would, state your name and address when you come up for the record and share your thoughts with us.
I'm Evan Johnson, one zero nine eight four, Lacy Drive, just north of the property in discussion. Uh, I wanted to highlight a couple of things really quickly. One thing stated when, um, uh, Hog Box was up here talking, saying that they didn't start operations until March, when there was already complaints in October. So I just wanted to clarify on that as well. And the reason they are applying for this conditional use permit is for overflow parking. And I wanted to pass these out to you guys, I think we've emailed them as well, that they are actively and have been for several months throughout this entire process, advertising for commercial parking on their property in Fayetteville. So I wanted to show them, you know, but. This is at the, uh, South Fayetteville location. So that, uh, was a red flag to us when we saw them actively advertising for people to park other equipment on their property as they were moving equipment to the property next to our, our farm, so.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Any questions?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Next.
Hello, my name is Blake Haney. I, uh, one zero five five nine, Southeast Campbell. Um, on one of the pictures where you can see all the semis lined up on the fence, um, that is my father-in-law's land there. And just to the other side, um, that is my land. Um, so that bottom, that top right, there in the corner right there, that all the way to the left is my property. Um, so at night, or at the evening time, we get the joys of looking out back and seeing that. Um, I just, I prepared a little narrative, uh, with my thoughts regarding this. Uh, local residents who value the peace and serenity of our rural environment have witnessed numerous close calls on these roads. Sharp turns, limited visibility, and steep inclines present significant challenges for drivers of these massive trucks, making safe navigation nearly impossible. With dense woods and steep drop-offs flanking many sections of the road, the community fears that it's only a matter of time before a serious accident occurs. Adding to our concerns is the issue of the semi-trucks, trailers being stored in areas zoned for regi- residential use. These trailers with their industrial appearance create an unsightly and disruptive contrast to the natural beauty of Campbellloo. The presence of these trailers undermines the, the aesthetic harmony of the area and detracts from the charm that originally drew residents to this neighborhood. The constant traffic of these trucks also generate dust and fumes, which are detrimental to the health of nearby residents. My ten-year-old daughter, who suffers from asthma, is particularly vulnerable to these pollutants, and I am deeply concerned that this situation will soon prevent her from safely playing outside. The urgency of this matter was further highlighted on June twelfth, twenty twenty-four, when a delivery was conducted at five-ten PM despite a cease and desist letter being issued. This delivery was made in clear defiance of the company's commitment in their letter of explanation dated June seventh, twenty twenty-four, stating that no additional containers would be moved onto the property pending the hearing and approval of their application. This blatant disregard for agreed conditions not only exacerbates existing safety and health risks, but also raises serious questions about the company's compliance with regulatory processes. I ask the Planning Commission to take these points into consideration. I ask the planning commission to take these points into consideration and make a new decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I have a question.
Sure.
Of the gentleman that just spoke. When this was going on, you said June the 12th?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any photos or videos?
Yes, ma'am, there was a video sent in. There was a video sent in.
Okay.
Of the, the truck being, bringing in the.
Is that date and timestamped?
We have a folder with every complaint we've received in all of the, the.
Just the pictures, are, are the pictures themselves date and timestamped?
This is a video, the one that I sent in, yes.
Okay.
And you can clearly see the visibility of just what one truck, the dust that it brings up, just one truck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on this item?
Hello, I am Adam Frankenberger. I live across the road, or actually, I own the property across the road from this property, 10734 Southeast Campbell. As has been, I'll just echo what many others have said. It is a, is a very dangerous road for large trucks to drive, and this business appears to be primarily moving large objects with large trucks. I'm one of the residents that was just mentioned that moved into this area for the more idyllic rural setting of it, and that definitely throws a kink into that. Many of the, even the neighboring parcels that have industrial use have a frontage road to the interstate that they access to do all their deliveries and truck driving. That road does not connect to this property, so they're using the other route. So it's just a lot more disturbing to the surroundings than some of those properties, so. That's all I have.
Appreciate it, sir, thank you. Anybody else like to make public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll play, close it to the public. Can I bring it back to the applicant, please? Okay, so first question, and I have driven this, the Hannah's, all the, there is, does seem to be an industrial park road there. You cannot access this property off of that road, correct?
That's a good question, not today. We are hopeful that if that gets expanded in the future, like when, when Hannah does his, his warehouse project, we could attach onto that road, we would consider that, but not today, no, sir.
Is that a county road, or is that, do you know?
I don't know.
I think it is, okay. I mean, because obviously that would be beneficial, and I mean, in my mind, if, it's, because when you drive it, it, yeah, there's Hannah's, there's the Pickett, there's the concrete, but all that, but it's kind of on a corridor that's pretty close ingress and egress to the interstate. To where your property, you got to go around and come in. I didn't know if this property touched that, if there was a plan to expand that road out or anything like that.
Maybe in the future, I think that would be convenient for everyone.
And then the second question, obviously, back to my point on, is this overflow parking? Are you leasing, is there, is your applicant leasing parking on the other property that's forcing this overflow? Is that property at 100% capacity forcing trucks, well, they're not trucks, whatever they are, containers to be parked on this property? Is it, is there, is this out of capacity necessity, or is this just out of some other reason to park these on this property?
No, no, sir, it's a, a good question. So I, I just spoke to Ms. Versary. It's a service that is offered and advertised at the South Fayetteville HQ. Typically, what has happened in the past is if a customer rents a trailer, but they want a place to store it, they will just leave it at the yard, whether it's filled with stuff or it's in a transition period. Ms. Versary said that they advertise the service today, but it has not been in, in use in the past year or so.
Other questions of the applicant?
May I, may I please clarify a question that you asked? The June, the June 12th date. So we, we got the cease and desist letter on May 6th or May 7th. There were three days after that that we pulled inventory off, June 12th was one of them. And that was when I worked with Mr. Ada, and I said, you know, I said, hey, we need to fulfill this customer order, give us till Friday. And then we did that, but the June 12th date was correct, if that clarifies your question. I think that's it. If there's any questions on the truck route, I know that is kind of in flux with the Greenland city. But as it stands today, we're, we're happy to comply with the truck routes as they are today.
So the, the planning commissioner mentioned that there may be additional changes to their ordinances that could potentially affect that dedicated truck route. Have you seen those proposals? Do you have a Plan B if those ordinances are changed at the Greenland level?
Ms. Reynolds was kind enough to give me notice that they were under review. I, I haven't fully reviewed it and, or know exactly what that looks like. But that, that's like, there's a lot of different ways that could go. If the city of Greenland annexed the property, then we would be inside the city limits, and nothing would apply because the destination is inside the city limits. So then you could just go through the north side. But if it adjusts, we're happy to discuss compliance with that.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Have you worked with Mr. Hannah at all about proposing extending that road? He seems to be the kind of person that would be receptive to that at some future point.
He, he is, Ms. Versary has had the preliminary conversations with him. I think he's open to the possibility. I just, I don't, I don't think his ware, that warehouse, you know, is, build out is done. But when it gets done and the road is further extended, I think it would be a lot easier for us to attach or work with him on extending it.
You, you would pursue that if it was an option?
I think that's fair to say, is that right? Yeah, yes, sir.
And just what I see on the surface is the route that you're having to take now, trucks and safety and all this are the problems. It, it's more or less, you're being asked to take a road that puts your trucks on the road for five times as long if you just could come from the north, straight up Campbell Loop, which is the route I took this morning in reviewing that. So because of the city of Greenland's decision, your trucks have to travel five times longer than they would have?
Yes, sir, that's correct. We're going significantly out of the way to try to please everybody.
I just want to make sure I was looking at that right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant?
These, these trailers are parked on grass.
Yes, sir.
Is there any problems with that? I mean, you can't get in there when it's wet, you can't, I mean, what, what is the limitations of parking on this property currently?
Good question. Certainly, rain would, would affect that. The planning team with the drainage team asked me the same question, because they, they had some concern that if we were just parking on the grass, would that affect the drainage? I believe the answer to that was, was no. So I think.
I don't see it affecting the drainage, but I do see a problem with continuous use of it. You're going to kill the grass, and then it's going to turn to dirt, and then it's going to turn to dust. And then we're, you know, you got the complaints from the neighbors then. And while it's somewhat isolated, you're still going to have some dust problem. I just know when I come, I move hay and into a property or something, it, after a while, the grass is gone, and it won't, it won't come back for quite a while, so.
Yeah.
If you, if you're moving a lot of, a lot of truck traffic over some grass, you're going to, you're going to kill the grass pretty soon, and then it's going to be dust, and then, or, I mean, are you going to come in and gravel it, or you're going to? I mean, what, what's the, what's the plan for mitigation af, after this, this, a time period? What's, what's going to happen?
That's a good question. One, because our use, we want to limit our use, it should be on a limited and as-needed basis. We should hopefully not out there more than five days a month blowing up dust. But I get the point, if you leave the containers on the grass, the grass dies. If that were to become an issue, we could, I'm, I'm certain we could put some gravel down to try to mitigate that issue, but gravel is dusty as well. But again, the intent of the project here is not a long-term solution. So hopefully, we can resolve it before that comes to a head.
You know, if, say it takes 1,000 square feet for a trailer, just because you have to have a truck maneuvering, I mean, you're, you're going to have somewhere between, well, I calculated 217 trucks is kind of the maximum that you can put on five acres.
217?
217, yes.
I don't think we will have that many out there, but.
That was my question before, was how many, how many trucks were there, and how many were you planting? So if you had 200, I mean, roughly 200 trailers sitting there, that, that seems to be kind of the, the number I'm thinking that you'd have, because you have to put them perfectly to get 217 on five acres.
I don't think the intent of the applicant is to have 217 out there. Point, point taken and understood. If we like to impose a cap on 100, we're open to discussing that.
Other questions of the applicant? Okay, appreciate it, thank you. All right, I'll bring it back to the board. It's not a perfect fit for conditional use, because a conditional use runs forever as long as the property owner stays the property owner. But, and I've only done this, I mean, I've done planning for 16 years at Fort Ismore Municipalities, but I've only been here for a year or two. I've never seen a time limitation on a conditional use. I don't even know if our regs or ordinances, some of you guys have been doing this longer than me. So that's a concern. Obviously, you know, in other projects that we've looked at that are in planning areas in municipalities, we've taken their concerns into consideration as well. So this one's a little outside the norm of what we do, but I do think, you know, this was tabled last meeting because we didn't have a very big group. I do think we owe them due process and would like to take action on the item tonight. So there's my comments as chair. Questions?
I don't have a question, but I've got a comment, and I've, I've got a lot of discussion prepared for this, because I've thought about it a lot, and I'm, I'm a free enterprise guy. There are certainly legitimate concerns for any neighbor that lives there. I mean, who would want to see that, right? But they do on the property. Now, if the solution is making a truck go around five times longer because they don't want it on this road, that, that makes a lot of sense to me, but that's, if that's what they're agreeable to, but seem to have gone out of their way, literally, to accommodate that.
Well, I think that's a function of Greenland.
Exactly.
Passing ordinances to restrict trucks.
So that they're creating more danger in, in some sense.
So have you, when you went out there and you came in from the Greenland side in the no-truck zone past the concrete areas?
Yes.
Did you go past Hog Box and go out the other way to this route?
I did not.
So that's the problem. When you do, there is a hairpin corner. And then, when you get to that stop sign, you've got another situation, it doesn't seem like it unless you're coming in, like you're returning to the property from the suggested truck route, and then you're going across a blind corner to come onto that road to then make the hairpin corner. So I'm with you. I do not like telling people what they can or cannot do with their property. And this isn't a wedding venue. I mean, this is substantial truck traffic coming on a small road with tight spots that are a problem. And there's two of them. There's one, the main corner on the road coming out, but then again, when you're coming to the property, and it doesn't, this truck route's going to change, and now they're going to have to run down to another exit and come, and come down the road, or they're going to have to come from 71 Business. If they come from 71 Business, there's only one way they can do it, because the other bridge has a 27, or a 66,000-pound limit, and their trucks are probably rated for 80,000 pounds.
But, but they're empty.
But, but they're empty, they're going to be under that capacity. I'm just saying, like DOT tag-wise, they're still going to be rated for more than the bridge is allowed. So if they're coming the other way, they're always going to have that corner that they're coming off of to access Campbell Road that is a blind corner, and then they have to make the hairpin turn going to the property.
You know, these are good points, as far as safety, then Ben will go. But there's, you know, other trucks, Lowe's trucks come out there all the time with inexperienced drivers using public roads.
Yep.
And the road is adequate. I agree that it, it adds a little bit more risk. But driving a car anywhere, you have some level of risk. Now, if the city of Greenland could remedy this situation by saying, this is the shortest, straightest, best road, why don't you use this road?
Welcome, neighbor. The city of Greenland has already heard this item and denied, and denied.
Yeah, I understand, so they've chosen.
They, they don't want this in their road there.
Right, but why, why make a private, private property owner suffer because of a perceived inadequate road? I mean.
And, and the grand, grand scheme of things, we're not talking about that much traffic either.
Right.
Yeah, but I would concur, I think there's safety issues.
Well, there is, but.
It's, it's, it's less than ideal semi-traffic.
It's substantial, and that road, that bend is horrible.
All right.
I'm also concerned about the dust and the dirt and the noise and the shaking of the ground when this stuff is dropped off, how it's affecting the neighbors. We've got apparently an asthmatic child nearby that's breathing all this in. I'm just, I'm very concerned, I'm just concerned.
Okay, I'm going to bring it to the board for action. Again, I'm a big due process guy. This is, I get both sides of this.
This is a struggle, for sure.
This is, this is one of the more difficult ones.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve it.
We got a motion recommendation for approval.
I will second it.
We got a motion and a second for approval. Let's call the roll on, voting on this one, please.
Anthony McNutt?
No.
Joe Maynard?
Yes.
Lisa Miller?
No.
Jay Piercy?
Yes.
Philip Humbard?
I don't know, I made the motion. I'm, I'm going to say no.
Lauren Shackleford?
No. Okay, so the motion has been denied. The county staff will be happy to meet with the applicant for the, the appeal process, which will go to court in court, justice of the peace. We can help you through that process on timing. Anything else? Okay, let's move forward. Uh, next item is the, I'm on the wrong, no, I'm on the right page. Land Development Hearings County Shamrock Acres Minor Subdivision. Start with the staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map, the site map, and the neighbors that were notified. The applicant is requesting a minor subdivision approval to split a 2.58 acre parcel into two tracks. Track one would be 1.58 acres, and track two would be one acre. To date, planning staff has not received any complaints about this project. And this is a minor subdivision because there are multiple tracks that are less than five acres. And then we have our standard planning conditions.
Okay, all right, so we're splitting a 2.5 acre, eight acre track to a 1.58 and a one, correct? Okay. All right, questions of staff from board members? Okay, is the applicant here?
Hello, Blaine Ashley with Bates and Associates, representing the property owners on this minor subdivision. Yes, she explained it pretty clear, it's pretty cut and dry, 2.5 acre parcel, keeping 1.5 acres with the house and splitting off one acre by itself.
Okay, all right. Any questions of the applicant from board members? Appreciate it. Open it up to public, anybody from the public like to make comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to the board.
Make a motion that we approve the Shamrock Acres Minor Subdivision as presented.
Got a motions or a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Moving on, uh, in the county also, Shop Solutions Final Large-Scale Development. Staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map and our site map. We had no, no neighbor notifications because this is the final. The applicant is requesting final large-scale development approval for four multi-use warehouse buildings. Parking consists of 49 regular spots and four ADA-accessible spaces. The conditional use permit was approved on November 3rd, 2022. The conditional use permit was approved on November third, twenty twenty-two and ratified on March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. The preliminary large-scale development was approved on June eighth, twenty twenty-three. The final LSD approval is required to start operating.
Okay.
This is some, sorry, no, you're fine.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
This is um, what the property looks like now as of the site visit that Mr. Ada was able to do. And these are our planning conditions.
Any issues through the process? Were there any concerns, anything that we had to to address as the county through this process from planning at a large scale?
Um, I was not on this project, so as far as I'm aware, no.
Okay, all right, I'll, sorry for asking on that one. All right, any questions of staff and board members? Okay, is the applicant here? I'll ask you the question. Any issues? Did y'all have any problems from drawings to preliminary to final? Everything go as planned?
Everything's gone as planned. It's been great.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Give us your name.
That's okay. My name's Brian Jesse. I'm with Mountainside Properties. We're the owner of the property.
Thank you. Any questions uh, from board of the applicant? All right, uh, project looks great. I know this is another one that we had a lot of conversations at the beginning, but uh, I drove out there and looked at it and you guys did a great job.
Well, thanks, yeah. It's beautiful. If anyone wants a tour, let me know.
Appreciate it. All right, anybody from the public like to make comments on this? Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to the board.
Make a motion that we approve the Shop Solutions Final LSD as presented.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. All right, next is the Springdale Planning Area Custom Lawn Care and Landscaping, also final LSD for phase one. Staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map. The site map. And we didn't notify neighbors due to this being a final project. The applicant is requesting final large-scale development approval to allow the operation of a lawn care and landscaping business. Parking consists of forty-six regular spots and four ADA accessible spaces. The conditional use permit was approved on December tenth of twenty twenty and ratified by the quorum court on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. The preliminary large-scale development was approved on May, yep, May sixth, twenty twenty-one and construction approval date was on January twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-one. This approval um, is for phase one. In the future, the applicant will need to come back to be approved for phase two. The final large-scale approval is required to start business operation.
Questions of staff from board members? Seeing none, is the applicant here?
I'm James Gertz with the E D A representing the owner on this. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Any concerns, any variations that we need to know of for the final LSD?
Not really. Uh, he had to take a little bit longer to do his construction on this, so that's why the timeline between the twenty-first or the twenty twenty-one and now.
Okay. Okay, all right. Any questions of the applicant from board members? Screening looks good on this too. I appreciate that, so. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. I'm sorry, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for action.
I'll, I'll expect the landscaping to be immaculate.
For a landscaping company?
I second that.
Well, if you look at the pictures, I mean, a lot of times we tell them to put in trees for screening. They put in four-foot trees and these guys put in some really nice trees, so.
I recommend approval as applied for.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I believe that's it. We've got uh, other business, discussion of current development and planning department activities. Sam's not here tonight. You guys want to talk about the special scheduled meeting?
Um, our special scheduled meeting will be next week on August twenty-eighth for our zoning discussion. Um, Sam will be in charge of that discussion and so if you have any questions, you can email him or call him about that beforehand. Um, and then we have our regularly scheduled planning board meeting. The next one will be on September twenty-sixth.
Okay, sounds good. Are we really going to do one October thirty-first on Halloween?
Yes.
My kids are not going to like you. All right.
She just gave me an excuse.
I'll come as a grumpy banker. All right, anything else for the good of the order? Any public comment for the good of the order? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all.
So, so would you be happy if they?